Council. You connected. Councilor Hollitt, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yay, I see that you're, you finally connected in. That's good. Glad to hear it. All right, it's seven o'clock, everyone. This meeting of the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, Oak Ridge City Council is called to order. Everyone, please rise or take the position you assume to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody, and welcome. This is going to be a busy evening. Jackie, will you call the role of councilors, please? Counselor Whitney?
Here.
Counselor Hollitt?
Here.
Counselor Spleda?
No.
Counselor Bjornson?
Here.
Counselor Kenyon?
Here.
Mayor Holston? Counselor Coker?
Here.
Everyone's there. Thank you, Jackie. I just want to remind everybody, council, if you'd like to leave your computer unmuted, that's fine. Everyone else is, please mute your computers. I also would remind everybody in the audience that there will be ample time for public comment. Using the chat is not a way to use public comment. I would ask that you stay off of it. Any comments on the chat will not be responded to. It is tantamount to jumping up in the middle of a meeting and saying, "I have something to say." So we won't be recognizing those things on the chat. Eric, you, but I don't think you mean to.
I do not.
Not you, Eric. The other Eric.
Okay.
Ignan.
That's, I just put my hand up for the public comment in a minute.
Okay. All right. Patience, patience, guys. Okay, do we have any additions, corrections, or adjustments to this agenda? Counselors, do you have any? All right. See, non-city administrator Brian, do you have any?
No changes, mayor.
Okay. Public comment is limited to three minutes each. I would remind you that if you have public comment on either thirteen, agenda items thirteen point one or thirteen point two. One is the, thirteen point one is the open public hearing for state revenue sharing. Thirteen point two is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. We will take those comments during the public hearing. There will be ample time. If you have comments other than that, we are happy to hear them at this time. If you have comment and you can raise your hand, please do. If you can't and you just want to unmute yourself and identify yourself, Eric, I see a hand up on yours. Do you have something to say?
Yes, thank you, head. Super mayor. My name is Eric Igden, four eight four zero one Sunny Nut. I address you tonight as a citizen, but for clarity, I have worked for full-time for the city of Oak Ridge Fire Department since November of two thousand seventeen. I would like to address concerns I have heard about the fire department's inability to balance its budget. The fire department operates with roughly forty-eight percent of its funding coming from the citizens of Oak Ridge. The remaining fifty-three percent of the department's operating funds comes from contracts with Hazelville Rural Fire Protection District, City of Westford, ambulance revenue, and other fees. Let me say that again. The fire department generates more than half of the revenue needed to operate. Next budget year has five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars being transferred to the fire department. And reports state the city has a five hundred and forty thousand dollar shortfall. The difference between this shortfall and the amount being transferred to the fire department is twenty-five thousand dollars. To blame the fire department for the entire shortfall would essentially be saying the fire department should be able to operate on twenty-five thousand dollars. This is not a fire department issue, but a city-wide issue. The fire department operates with twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five staffing. We operate with one full-time city employee, one contracted employee through people-ready temp service, and up to two volunteer stipends. This stipend level is driven by the operation of the ambulance. We depend on our volunteers and the stipend program to operate. This budget cycle should go to an all-volunteer fire department, has affected our volunteers' morale and availability. Our stipend coverage has gone from around a fifty-nine percent to twenty-seven percent coverage for this month. The stipend program is meant as a reimbursement to offset costs associated with those that choose to volunteer. Our volunteers are our most valuable asset to need to be praised, not criticized. As an example, during my last vacation, one of our volunteers responded to four instances while he was off duty. These four instances required him to be away from his family for over nine and a half hours on his day off. As a result, he missed a friend's graduation ceremony he was supposed to attend with his wife.
You have thirty seconds.
This is just one example of sacrifices our volunteers make to the community we serve. I only ask that you stop the personal attacks and work for the city of Oak Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Kathy, you're not coming through with your voice.
Is that better?
Yes.
I appreciate that. Okay, give me a minute. I have to scroll through screens here. I see a hand up for public comment for Mr. Barkley.
Someone much wiser than I'll ever be once said that good people do not need laws to tell them to act responsibly while bad people will find a way around the laws. Some of you may be familiar with the name Plato that said this four centuries before Christ. Revising a seven-page city charter or two-page resolution written at roughly an eighth-grade level and beyond the level of comprehension by four more elected officials might be a way to find, find a way around the laws that Plato mentioned. Well, public officials can't even affix a one-word stencil to a derelict and inoperable water tower. In the months immediately prior to and since my appointment to planning commission, council has yet to convene a regular session without at least one violation of the city charter. Tonight, council will decide distribution RTM funds based on a misleading matrix on page thirty-one of your package, including a clearly ineligible applicant according to page thirty-two of the same packet, with council and committee endorsement. No doubt the ensuing discussion will be equally flawed, as has been the case since twenty eighteen. I've had the good fortune of being mentored by truly stellar leaders that led by strong personal examples worthy of emulation. For me, leadership is always by example, not exception and excuses. And I completely agree that the current crisis is not a leadership failure. Living in a town where both city administrators, both finance directors, and both mayors elected for-year terms in the span of seven years were terminated or resigned under a cloud of disgrace. Leadership left the building when former mayor Shory did. There are no leaders without followers, and leaders are actually both, as we all work for someone. After extensive and painful reflection over the past few months, as I pride myself on finishing what I start, I cannot and will not support or subordinate myself to or follow leaders unwilling or unable to lead, demand respect by their contact, and demand it from subordinates when necessary. That said, ineffective immediately, I hereby tender my resignation as city of Oak Ridge Planning Commissioner, and to borrow a phrase from a popular game show, final not a puppy and it's offensive. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, Mr. Barkley. Ms. Hammond, I see your hand up.
Good evening, everyone. I am appreciative of the efforts put forth by your councilors and have faith in their interest for Oak Ridge as a whole council. I do not believe some of the budget committee's citizen members had worked in a manner that put personal interests aside for the benefit of our community. What saddens me is that much of this community is reading the distorted truths and blatant lies published on the internet, dividing our community. Moving on from that, regarding public safety on Oregon Highway fifty-eight on a state level, I've been told by Mayor Holston she would reach out to our Oregon rep personally during a city council meeting directly after my daughter's death. When I informed council that I was going to call our Oregon rep to ask that emergency call boxes be placed along Highway fifty-eight in dead zones where there is no cell service, in which I did reach out in June twenty twenty, I was told by Oregon rep he would do some research. I've received zero information from either. I believe the COVID pandemic played a big part in that. So I ask again to you, mayor, now to make that call. It's about public safety at a different level. As a public safety committee member, I believe my position would greatly benefit the citizens with animals. I will continue education and training to become a leader in disaster planning for animals. As my character was attacked, that experience triggered my PTSD and has not improved. Therefore, I hereby step down from the Oak Ridge Public Safety Committee. In closing, I expect much for this community's future, specific with the continued dedication, integrity, and fostering community unification of Counselor Hollitt, Counselor Bjornson, Counselor Kenyon, Counselor Whitney, Mayor Holston, and is there one more? I lost count.
Audie.
Audie, my precious Audie, and Counselor Audie, I thank you all. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry, I figured I had to take the hand down.
Okay, you'll get it. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to make public comment? I'm looking. I am looking as I'm doing this. I don't see anything, any changes in people who have come off. I do want to, want to say for the record, Mr. Barkley, if you are tenuring your resignation, we will also need it in writing. So please either email or write to the city administrator. Thank you. Okay. You don't see anybody else?
We have some.
Wait, I do. Sorry. So I see Scott Hollitt, and I also see Kristi Ball's hand up. Kristi, I'm going to call on you first, and then Scott after Kristi is through. Kristi, go ahead, please.
Okay.
I can hear you.
I just wanted to say. At first, I had some thoughts, and then I heard Mr. Barkley and Trudy, you know, give their public comments. Oak Ridge, if you've lived here for a short amount of time or a long, a long period of time, like there's people who've lived here their entire lives, it is a good place to live. And I feel really saddened by the fact that two people tonight already have, in their comments, stepped down from volunteer positions because I know the sacrifice that it takes away from your personal life and from your family and your friends to make it to meetings, to do all the research, to participate in these committees and, and everything. And that is truly sad to me. That would be the third, after Eric spoke about the fire department, said that they have a lack of morale and volunteers are not sad. I know a really great volunteer police department. We don't really have that anymore either, and that saddens me. I do think that there's a lot of people who are super passionate about both police and fire, and it seems like the citizens online have kind of pitted against each other. And that upsets me because I think that when we are in the greatest crisis our city has was when we literally have no money for any special projects or even, it seems like, basic needs now that we would, you know, fight with each other over it. I've participated in it because I'm passionate about the police department. My husband has been a police officer for many, many years before he retired here, started all the way back in two thousand. And so I am passionate about that. I, I don't ever want to come across, like, I don't give, you know, a care about the fire department because I think they're both essential. But I, I do remember going through the major cuts that we had to go through at the police department where people didn't know until after it was all done and over with. The very next day, people lost their jobs, people that had been here a long time, people who, you know, lived their entire lives here and worked for the police department, suddenly were without a job. We lost our entire jail. We lost our entire jail, and we lost all the dispatch in one night, and that was horrific. And I hope that whatever comes out of tonight, it's we really do need to come together. It's not a time to pit each other against each other. We are, we have tough decisions to make. I don't envy you guys for the decisions you have to come up with or, or, you know, the planning that it takes to find a solution to this.
Thank you.
I just.
Three minutes. Please wrap it up.
That's all I had to say is that I hope that whatever comes out of tonight, that everybody, somehow we find a way to come back together and be the community that we love to have, where everybody is getting along and, you know.
Thank you, Kristi. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Scott Hollitt, please go ahead.
My name is Scott Hollitt. I live at four eight three seven zero seventh street, and I'm speaking tonight as a citizen. I apologize right off the bat. I'm probably going to reiterate a couple of things that Captain Higdon said, but I do think it's very important. I've been with Oak Ridge Fire EMS for thirty-three years, serving both as a volunteer and a full-time paid employee. During that time, the fire department has never been self-supporting. We generally generate half of our operating costs from ambulance service fees, fire med, and intergovernmental agreement contracts with our neighbors. The other half has come from taxpayer revenues. We serve an area population of approximately five thousand people and run over a thousand calls per year. There's no fire ambulance department in the state of Oregon that is able to support its operations without tax dollars. If you simply eliminate the ambulance, those revenues go away, and you're left to support a fire department with tax dollars only. As an example, Dexter Fire's entire operating costs are supported by tax revenues, and their budget is right at five hundred thousand. They have three paid staff with an area population of about fifteen hundred people. They've run less than three hundred calls per year. Lowell has an operating budget of about seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand. They're also solely supported by tax dollars and serve an area population of about two thousand people. They run approximately three hundred and fifty calls per year and have four paid staff. Neither their department has an ambulance. The citizens of Oak Ridge pay about five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in taxes that go to the fire department. For that, we get twenty-four-seven fire protect, and most days we deploy two advanced life support ambulances. And I think in anybody's mind that that is a bargain compared to other areas. Last thing I want to say is I can't say enough about our volunteers and the sacrifices they give to serve the citizens of Oak Ridge. And if they get, anything they get is well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And I'm looking if, I don't see any other hands up. Is that correct? Brian?
Hey, all right. I have some folks that want to make some comments at the whack.
Certainly. Send them up one at a time to identify themselves.
Yeah, you can come right here in front of the camera and state your name and address.
My name is Susan Ladue, and I live at four seven five six River View. I want to voice opposition to the safety publicly, and I want to explain why. I want the community to understand this fee was avoidable. Three councilors have been gaslighting the community. A few years ago, a plan was developed, developed with the cooperation and approval of the fire union itself. This plan would have reduced spending while preserving the jobs of the paramedics, allowed time for the city to review and devise a plan that would stabilize the EMS, a plan that did not place the burden on the public. It was sabotaged through harassment of volunteers and temporary workers, through disruption at city council meetings that prevented the council from focusing on fixing the problem, to false allegations against staff, propagating lies, and all-out attacks on Facebook. And I've had proof. Kristi Hollitt created a fake picture of an ambulance and told people the former CA, fire chief, and I were creating a private ambulance, a complete lie, yet people believed it. Don Kenyon posted she had seen me texting then-council Roland during meetings, complete lie. Judy had an old flip-style phone that she had a hole within inches of her face to even see it, yet people believed it. Melissa Bjornson chiming in at every accusation to back up every one of their single lies. Kristi Hollitt went so far as to falsify a letter to council. This is a letter signed by Michael McPherson that states she was advised her email was turned into a letter, and her work title and agency was added by Kristi Hollitt. Kristi falsified that document and handed it council, and people believed it. None of these lies were ever corrected on their private Facebook page. I could go on and on. These examples were actually pretty mild, but you get the point. These three did these things to create animosity, distrust, upheaval, and ultimately get rid of anyone that attempted to change and fix the issues at the fire department. Through social media, it may be tested that the thirty-one-dollar charge is directly to the public, the PA, the mayor. It is not. This is just one more of the same gaslighting these three used before to sway the public against those who realize the system is not sustainable. They want to cut everything except their own paycheck, close the parks, close the libraries, sell off land, get rid of anything they deem a nicety, keeping family and friends pay intact because that, they call a necessity. There are citizens who consider their medications a necessity and an ambulance a nicety because without one, the other will do them no good. The citizens voted down a levy. They do not deserve this fee that could threaten their financial well-being because three members of council decided, deceived, and lied to them in order to protect themselves and their friends. And they continue to lie and distort anything that goes against their agenda. While it may be too late to
thirty seconds.
It's not too late to ask these three to step down or to start a recall. If they remain on council, this issue will not be resolved timely, nor with the community's best interest at heart. It's far more likely the fee will be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, next is Nancy Kelly. Can you come forward, ma'am?
Thank you.
You can take it off.
Hi, Nancy Kelly, four eight three two eight East First Street in Oak Ridge. Low, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to ask that you deny taking gas festival request for an alcohol permit on First Street between Oak and Baldur Street. The festival was to be moved to Green Waters Park, and alcohol consumption should not be permitted on Street Street. That's outlined by LLC. When the first request was made, the council approved with the following condition. Taking gas bets will end at nine P M., clean up no later than ten P M., acoustic music only after six P M., and to move it to Green Waters Park after that year. They made their decisions after considering ordinances for noise and popping rights. Notice was made not an echo of these events. This area combines business and single-family residents, which should exist in harmony. My home is a single-family residential built in nineteen twenty-three. When I brought the property, the zoning of the house is thoroughly investigated, and I have confirmation from the city and the president. As a property owner, I have invested in Oak Ridge, paid property taxes, and helped out where I can. I have made several requests through council over the years, as the festival was noisy, interfered with my property rights, and quiet enjoyment of my home. As a comparison, I looked at the year festivals over Oak Ridge. About three hundred, but only one, the taking gas festival is in front of residence. Most are held in parks or lots in business-only districts, I found. The council agreed, and festival was meant to Oak Ridge, to Oak and Ash Street. Now it will be moved again in front of my house. This is unacceptable, and we should deny the request for an alcohol permit. And I apologize that I did not come to the meeting when they asked for a permit for this, but I was not noticed. And so therefore, I did not know that there was a meeting. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Mayor, next is Lori Nemode. Nemody, sorry.
Lori Nemody, four eight two two nine, Highway fifty-eight, Oak Ridge. I just want to say I'm not really sure about all the things that are written, but I was told, we got an email from the CA stating that the thirty-one dollars a month water safety fee was only going to be one per business. But all over Facebook, it's saying, well, I think even in the, your thing that you have online says that it's thirty-one dollars. You know, we have an RV park and motel and a mobile home park, and so it's forty-five spots. If you guys charge us thirty-one dollars, it would be close to seventeen thousand dollars a year. This is a huge impact on our business. I have some tenants that are here today, and this would greatly impact them because I would, of course, we would, of course, pass that on to them. And a lot of them are on social security. They work as many hours as they can to make it, but the, you know, it's, it would very, very much impact their lives. And so I just, I hope the community and the that we can all stand up, you know, for each other and not have to pay this. I know some, I've heard safety fee, and I've heard water. If it's not for water, it shouldn't be on the bills. I don't care if you're trying to save money or not. You know, tenants don't understand if we say water's included, and then, then we tack them on with this thirty-one-dollar fee. So if you're not, if it's, if you're going to put it on my water bill, it should be part of my water bill. And anyways, I just think it's ridiculous that you guys are trying to charge us per motel, per RV sport. Not every RV spot is rented, you know, each, every single night, or you guys get, you know, it's just really unfair. And I think it'll put, I know they said there's a, something about a for low-income people. Well, how's that affect our business where we rent to, you know, full-time RVers or mobile homes in the back? How, because it all comes on one bill. So how are we going to make that fair for everybody? Not just my business, but other businesses. There are several mobile home parks in the area that would definitely be affected by this thirty-one dollars a month. But I would like it clarified in this meeting, if possible, that how this thirty-one dollars a month is going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, do you have any others at the whack?
I have a email statement that I'll read, and then we have another after that. So here's the, I received this. Stephen Hardesty, is that, so you want me to read this or not?
Yeah, one minute. Yeah, please.
Okay. So this is actually submitted by Stephen Hardesty. Dear Mayor, Council, City Council members, and City of Oak Ridge stakeholders, my name is Stephen Hardesty. I'm one of the management team associated with the Arbor Inn Motel, Oak Ridge RV Park, and Mini Storage, located at Salmon Creek Bridge at four eight two two nine, Highway fifty-eight. Our business employees, employees, two onsite individuals and several residents of Oak Ridge and the surrounding area. We are all dependent upon the success of Oak Ridge as a community and thriving economy. Therefore, we hope the following comments are viewed in light of our strong desire for the success of Oak Ridge and its economy. Pursuant to the exhibit Public Safety Fee three point oh collection, the imposition of surcharges shall be calculated on the basis of number of units supported without regard to the number of water meters serving that property. We are motel-serving transient room guests and an RV park-serving transient and long-term guests. While I've been advised by city staff that pros fee, if adopted by the city, has written, would be a total of thirty-one dollars a month, I want to highlight the impact of a proposed public safety fee of thirty-one While I've been advised by city staff to propose fee if adopted by the city has written would be a total of thirty one dollars a month, I want to highlight the impact of a proposed public safety fee of thirty one. Per month, should it be applied to all rooms and R V spaces as indicated by my reading of the Public Safety Fee three point O collect. Collection language quoted above. Assuming that that is the case, my business would be liable for approximately seventeen thousand dollars of total. Public safety fees on an annual basis. To put that amount in perspective, seventeen thousand is significantly more than our. Total property taxes, which covers the city of Oak Ridge Schools, Lane County, et cetera. Should Oak Ridge ultimately pass this amount of public safety fees on our business, I have no choice but to pass these on. To my motel and R V transient customers in the form of a surcharge. Probably in the order of four to ten percent based on the cost of services rendered and directly thirty one dollars per R V space per month to my long term R V guests. As many of my long term R V and mobile home guests are on fixed incomes such as social security, this would be a significant financial burden for those seniors. While there appears to be some consideration for a means based fee reductions, I do not see any current method for passing this consideration through. A business such as an R V park, apartment complex, mobile home park, et cetera, to the final space renter. Sincerely, Stephen Hardesty. Anchor in motel and Oak Ridge R V Park. Arbor Inn. We do.
Did you say you had one more? I see Jan Hooker waiting.
Yeah, one more here. They came in late, but if we, your permission, we'll let him speak. They didn't sign up to.
Yes, absolutely. Jan, once the last person at the WAC is done, I will call on you. I see your hand.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Daryl Tyndall. And I live here in Oak Ridge at seven six one two four Rigdon. And. I'll be brief. My thoughts on this are that I realized that I'm not, I'm trying to unify our community a little bit here and I'm not here to point fingers or divide anyone. I realize that we have government people here that have a stake in the fire department and maybe the police department as well. And. You know, frankly, I'm glad I'm not in your shoes because I do believe that you're. Trying to balance the act of fulfilling the wills of the public here in Oak Ridge versus putting food on your own table. And I'm glad I'm not in your shoes on that decision, but here we are. With that said. You know, we, we just had a tax increase voted down in our most recent election, a big whopper tax increase and nobody wanted it. It failed by a wide margin. Here we are in just a couple of months later, trying to put this fee on top of the citizens of Oak Ridge. Which clearly the overwhelming majority of them are not going to want to do it. Now. Maybe, maybe our fire department and E M S is a good deal. Maybe it's not. I don't know. Frankly, I don't think it matters at this point. I think we're past that. I know that this, there's an overwhelming percentage of the city budget goes to fire and E M S, an extremely high percentage of our money. And. It's just not sustainable. I just don't see how, whether it's a good deal or a bad deal. Matters at this point. I think we are going to have to go to a volunteer fire department. We're going to have to save some money somewhere and that's where it needs to be. You can't cut the police anymore. You can't cut these other services anymore. There's nothing left to cut. It's over. And. That's my comment.
Thanks.
So I, I have to apologize, Jan Hooker. I saw Jan and there's a hand. Up and I assumed it was you and then you popped on the screen. So I see someone who's entitled Jan with a hand up. Please go ahead, whoever that is, and identify yourself with your name and address.
Yes, I have my video on. It's Jan Christensen and I live at four seven seven one six West Second Street here in Oak Ridge. I volunteered for the budget committee and I was really disappointed when I heard. Things like. They worked. That's kind of how I felt and I did a little bit of training through it and I didn't learn a whole lot and it was on a fake city's budget. So it was all kind of like not apples to apples and. A little confusing. I just honestly feel like. We didn't really get as far as we could have if we'd started earlier. And I also want to say that I think the council should have come to the community at large. With the seriousness of this and before that election for the tax levy, you might have gotten it passed. For all we know. If you, I think it's like keeping people in the dark. If you aren't telling them, hey, this is serious and this is what's going to happen if you don't do this. And because of that, I think the council should work a little harder at cutting stuff and. I, I can't even believe that my water bill here in Oak Ridge is three times what I paid in the state of California. That, that just makes no sense to me. And now adding another fee, though it's not for water. It's going to hurt a lot of people and everybody that I've talked to is kind of shocked. They don't even know what's happening in this town or they're just. Sticking their heads in the sand. They know we're in trouble, but they don't know the degree. And they're saying, well, that's really going to hurt the town. Everybody's going to quit watering their lawns. But you know what? The people who got the big purse checkbook in their, you know, take home, maybe not take home. I don't know, but they have a lot of benefits we. Don't have as normal citizens and nobody wants to cut anything. You know, I don't think it's fair to pass that thirty one dollars on to the community without working a little hard. For at your job, getting this resolved. I haven't even been invited to the Hollitt's Facebook page. I've, I've tried. And they have not accepted me and I think I kind of know why. I'm going to take it a little personal. That's all I have to say.
All right, Brian, I think we've completed everybody at the WAC. I don't see any other hands.
Yeah, we're all ready at the WAC. Move on.
Okay, good, good. I am going to close this public comment period and we're going to move. Mayor's comments, announcements and proclamations, which is number six. The first thing I want to do. And. Let me put my screen here is, as you know, we had a Sasquatch Duro race here last weekend. And the organizer of the event, Mike Ripley, wrote a letter that he would like us to hear. This is to both Westford and Oak Ridge. Greetings. Thank you for the support of the Sasquatch Duro in twenty twenty one this past Saturday. We are pleased to report first and foremost that we did not have any injuries to riders. And all were super positive about your community vibe and effort to make this event happen. We ended up having just over two hundred of the two hundred and sixty riders show and get back to as normal as we could make the event in twenty twenty one. In the coming month, we will be sending out a survey to the participants, gathering information on nights of stay and other economic impact questions. Prior to the event, we asked writers about travel plans, including accommodations, thirty seven stated hotel stays and another twenty five selected V R B Os or rental accommodations. All others were camping or in an R V. The best western and local accommodations were sold out. In addition to the event being well received, we are pleased to report that over a thousand dollars was raised for the Alpine Trail Care Crew. And donations along with over twelve hundred dollars in meal vouchers that were redeemed to local businesses. Mud Slinger Events did end up having some delays, securing the street closure promptly, which frustrated a few locals, but not. Wholly inhibited them from operating. The addition of detour signs reduced the number of burnouts and anger by quite a bit in the future. If we close the street again, we will collect the needed addresses from the city for a minimum of thirty days notice to all of the uptown area. In our end, we did make strides with connecting to the highway fifty eight herald for an article in mid May, along with paying for two weeks of banner placement in the header to further the message. That we were coming to town. Next year, we hope to place a banner on the high school chain link fencing to announce the event on the corner of East First and Crestview Street. To all to see regardless of our venue location. The high school may have a process for this similar to what we have done in Cottage Grove. Overall, we want to move the event from uptown to Green Waters and or the industrial area and create an area for a more significant event. We hope local businesses will engage in our celebration of gravel cycling next June eleventh, twenty twenty two. Thank you for your continued support as we bring back ordinary and get set for proper planning in twenty twenty two. From the police escort to local support, we are always impressed with how positive momentum can create a lasting memory for gravel cyclists. And those looking for adventure in Oak Ridge and Westford. Sincerely, Mike and Andy Ripley, Mud Slinger Events O L C. So just letting you know about that. And next week, next weekend, the twenty fourth, twenty fifth and twenty sixth is the Oregon Trail Gravel Grinder Event that's stationed out of. That is run out of Green Waters Park. And. I think that's all I have for announcements. So let's move on then to. Let's move on to council comments. And council announcements. I see two hands from councillors at this point. Audi, you go first and then councillor Kenyon afterwards.
I, I just wanted to say one thing on your comment on. The, the streets up there. There was a business down there that. On. First street, the hair salon. That couldn't get their patrons in. Because of the blocked streets and the tent over their thing. And they, they stated to me that they never received any notice. In the mail or anything of what was going on. So if they would have, they would have rescheduled their patrons. Because some of them that come in there, they can't walk very far. So. That was the only thing that was reported to me that, that I heard of down there. So. We need to, I guess as council need to be aware. Next time anything happens down there. What? What businesses are there? And make sure that those businesses are fully aware what's going on. So they can, you know, I guess by writing. So they can be fully aware with what to do and how to work. And that, that's my comment.
Sledoff, councillor Kenyon.
Thank you, mayor. First thing to ask real quick, is Nancy Kelly still in the audience at the? WAC?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, she is. I can't see. Oh, excellent. Nancy, I really had trouble hearing you, I think, due to the distance between you and the microphone.
Okay.
During your comments and. But I think that I gathered. Something about. A previous council decision. To have the cake and cask in another location.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, I will. I don't know if you have the time right now, but I want to invite you to stay for that part of the conversation so I can learn more. From you. Or have you repeated all now? I guess that's up to the mayor, which one she'd like to do.
I didn't have any problem hearing her, but if she, if Nancy would like to stay during that time, I'd be happy to. To include her comments at that time.
Okay, thank you. I, do you mind Nancy staying for that? And so I can understand better what you're. What was that?
Um, no, let's just, we'll do it, we'll deal with it when we get to the agenda item.
Thank you. And then beyond that, I want to thank everyone who. Who spoke in public comment tonight. I know that there are going to be more opportunities during different part of the meeting for. For more public comment, like specifically on the resolutions and the ordinances that we have before us tonight. But. I just want to thank everyone and I am, I am truly sad to see. We've lost some seat positions and our volunteers. But I especially do want to thank also Scott Hollitt and Eric Higden, I believe his last name for their. Both of their comments. About the fire department were really helpful and insightful. I think I hope that. Information is going to help citizens. But thank you, everyone.
But Kathy, this was Bobby. Um, I can't figure out how to.
That's okay.
On this computer. And but I just wanted to follow up on. The last meeting's approval for fireworks, which I think. Is great. It's, I think it's a very exciting thing. It'll be nice for the community to have something, but. If I remember right, from a couple of years ago, we, I know that. There was a little bit of follow up on it as in, you know, this is how much we're paying for the fireworks and these are the people that we're going to pay, but. I remember that there was a fundraiser done at the event where food was donated and a fundraiser was done. And, you know, it was all based on city money. So I was hoping that we can get some follow up on that and see if that money will be used. For this year's event.
I'm able to talk on that right now.
Okay. If councillor Whitney, councillor Hollitt, if you can hold on to your thoughts. Let's hold that for county, city council business at number nine. So let's move forward, gather your thoughts and then we'll talk about it then. Okay?
Thank you.
Good. Any other comments from council? Now, let's move into the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. I'll second that. Councillor Kenyon. Councillor Whitney and seconded by councillor Kenyon. Jackie, please call for a vote.
Councillor Whitney?
I.
Councillor Hollitt? Councillor Hollitt? Councillor Sledoff?
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye. Councillor Hollitt is an aye. Sorry about that.
Thank you, councillor Hollitt. That passes. Let's move on then to business of this, from the city council and it sounds like. Run, we, we would like to entertain a discussion. About the fireworks. And I think we'll start this by councillor Hollitt. I think you have an update. You said you'd like to, like to give us. So let's start with that and then if we have any other questions, we can go from there.
Councillor Whitney, were you able to watch the last meeting? Cause I did give a pretty thorough update at the last meeting.
Um, no, I have not watched it in all detail.
Okay, so your question regarding the fundraiser, I just want to clarify that no money from the city came from a fundraiser. The only money that the city provided was the money for the fireworks. I paid out of pocket myself for the permit fee. With the state of Oregon and the barbecue itself was paid for by dow towing. They bought all the. Stuff to make hamburgers and be able to feed people and their goal was to be able to feed all the volunteers, the. Firefighters, wildland firefighters, all the people coordinating and then depending upon what extra there was, sell a meal for five dollars apiece. That's what we did. After paying everything back, it came to a couple hundred dollars. It was a very monetary, very nominal amount of money, but we used some of it last year. Because of COVID, we weren't able to have the festival itself. So we did sort of a contest for people to decorate their homes. And councillor Kenyon put together gift baskets and sort of prizes from local businesses and. Awarded those. I think there's a couple hundred dollars left and at our last fireworks meeting, we went over that. And. Yeah, we're going to try to use that this year to pay for. The permit from the state so that I don't have to pay out of pocket this year. Do you have any more questions about last year? Cause there actually I had, did go over this a couple of times throughout the last couple of years.
Okay, no, that's fine. Um, so have, if I remember. Okay, no, that's fine. Um, so have, I, if I remember correctly, you were also going to create a to-do list of how to do this process? Um, and that was from a couple of years ago. So is that something you were still going to do that way if somebody followed behind you? Um, they would be able to easily pick up?
We have a committee of people and everything is being done with the committee. So I wouldn't say that it's necessarily, you know, in an SOP format, but everything the committee sees with their own eyes. So if some for so if I were to die in a car wreck tomorrow, I think um, the committee would know what needs to be done. Um, you know, there might be a couple um, you know, questions or something, but everything's um, pretty transparent. We have about let me look and tell you how many people are on the committee. One second. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. We have thirteen people right now that are um, active on the community, but there have been a couple more people to come in and um, join. We had a meeting uh, beginning of this week and we'll be having at least one meeting until um, the event. And um, you're welcome to attend to the meeting. We're doing Tuesday nights, I think six thirty. And um, everybody has different tasks that they're working on. Um, we did.
How do I find out when the meetings are?
I just told you.
But is there a way to find out otherwise? When they are? I mean, are the, are you putting them on the um, Facebook page for?
It's a committee, so it's a planning committee. If people want to be
Okay.
involved, they come to the meeting. I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I remember I was involved that first year. So um, okay. So where is it out on Tuesday?
The fire department, community room.
Okay. All right. Right, thank you.
Okay. Hollitt, um, I sent you an email a couple of weeks ago reminding you that we needed to put in a permit for Green Waters Use Park. I haven't seen one yet.
Um, so. Is that, or come, or coming? The permit was sent uh, last week to Brian. And um, Brian emailed back and noted the things that he wanted to get done on it. And he said that we would need to have it done before the twenty fourth. And I believe most every thing's done on the list. There is one thing that I'll need to talk to you and Brian about probably tomorrow. And then um, just to let you know that the permit, um, the event permit has already been taken care of with Chief Martin. And the um, area safety plan is complete and it has been inspected.
Um, I don't need the details. We have a pretty tight meeting here, but I was expecting to see an application this month, this, this time, and that explains why I didn't, I don't see it. So thank you. Um, that's all I needed. Good stuff. I think we're all looking forward to it. If you don't know anything about what we're talking about. Um, councillor Hollitt, it is, I don't remember what the fireworks page is called on Facebook. Uh, Oak Ridge Fireworks, is that what it is?
It's Oak Ridge Independence Day.
That's it. Oak Ridge Independence Day. So um, if you uh, go onto Facebook, go in there and take a look at what's going on. They've been putting updates in there as they have uh, have information. So um, I'm looking forward to having a community opportunity to gather together. I understand there was one band so far. So that's great.
There's, there's actually four or five bands, but that one has a committed time.
Okay, great.
Yeah, good. Yep.
Awesome.
There's also flyers going up around town for people that are participating.
Okay, wonderful. So watch for the flyers also. Wonderful. Um, let's move on then. And, oh dear, where did my computer go here? Let's move on uh, to business from the city administrator, uh, number ten, ten point one. Brian, the floor is yours.
You. Ten point one point one, which is a letter of support for City of Oak Ridge Housing Needs Analysis. Looking for a motion to endorse a letter of support, which is required by the, the people providing the grant. Uh, the exhibit was a letter of support. So uh, we're hoping to get a uh, planning assistance for housing needs analysis update from the DLCD. Uh, it will provide the city with valuable data regarding Oak Ridge housing challenges, assets and future needs. Uh, as outlined in our comprehensive and strategic plans. Uh, it does require letters before, as I mentioned, your choices are here to approve the letter of support or do not approve the letter of support or recommend in option one and the motions before you.
Brian, I move.
Go ahead.
Letter of support for planning from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to perform a housing needs analysis.
A second.
Kenyon and seconded by councillor Whitney. Uh, is there any discussion from council?
Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment that the way that the information was presented in the um, in the packet here, it wasn't very clear to me at all that that there was a grant for this. And uh, I had emailed requesting more information and I, and I was updated to learn that from Brian. Um, if I missed it, I apologize. I just wanted to point that out. That's all.
Yeah, I, I believe that when we had the presentation, it was mentioned that we, this would be under a grant. Um, but it's easy, easy to miss that. I, I'm glad you asked the question. Um, councillor Spleedoff, go ahead.
That was my question is is it going to cost the city anything or is that coming out of the grant?
Coming out of the grant. It won't cost us anything. As you can see on this, the fiscal impact is zero.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um, uh, any other councillors? I don't see any. Okay, Jackie, will you please call for a vote? Jackie, before you call for a vote, um, there is a Shannon Smith on the screen that has a hand up. If you can get your hand down, that's great. I'm going to ignore it because we're not calling on people during the middle of the meeting. Um, but pop it back up again at public comment. Thank you. Uh, Jackie, go ahead and call for a vote.
Okay. Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Whitney?
Aye.
Councillor Spleedoff?
Okay.
One, no, am I doing this wrong? Yes. Go ahead. Um, let's see, here we are. I have two computers going today and it's kind of making me crazy here. Street closure for ten point one point two, street closure. Um, and you see before you the application from Kagan Cask as well as the agenda item with the recommended motion. Um, I believe councillor Kenyon, if you can be brief as possible with Ms. Kelly to get the information that you were unable to hear. Um, Nancy, if you can step up at uh, the WAC so that we can have the, a bit of a back and forth before we move into this, I'd appreciate it.
Let me just scoot up a little bit.
There you go. Councillor Kenyon, be sure and let us know if you can't hear her.
I will. I will. I didn't want to interrupt her earlier. Um, but thank you for staying, Nancy. Can you just clarify for me the part that you told us regarding a previous council decision and what that was? And how that's affecting today?
So the very first um, request that was made for the Kagan Cask, the council approved it, but with the following condition. The Kagan Cask hours were to be uh, consistent. Nine PM, clean up at ten PM, acoustic music only from six PM. And to move to the Green Waters Park the following year.
And when was that?
Um, about two eight, two oh nine. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date. I didn't, couldn't find all my information.
Oh.
Does that help you? This was actually posted in the Dead Mountain Echo that they would be moving to the Green Waters Park the following year.
Okay, I wasn't aware of any of that. Um, but it, it does seem like uh, it's been a long time ago. Have you brought this particular matter up to council in the past? I know you've come to um, to let us know that your concerns about the noise.
It's a little moiling just noise.
Well, I know, I know. I apologize.
The use in my home.
Right, I don't mean to make light of it. I do appreciate your coming to us and, and, and describing your concerns and issues. Um, but yeah, that, that is all I wanted to find out about. So I do appreciate you staying. Thank.
There are several other, other years that that was also made known. And I can find documentation of that if you want.
Um, okay, I, maybe I could meet with you sometime outside of a council meeting and we can go over it. I'd be happy to do that.
Oh, sure. That would help.
Okay, thank you.
Sometime.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Spleedoff, I see your hand up. Uh, I'd like to get into a motion before we have any discussion, but if you have a, have a pre-question, go for it. Councillor Spleedoff? Are you there?
Yeah. Uh, ne- never mind, I'm sorry. I think I forgot my hand down.
All right, thank you. Um, can I hear a motion from council, please?
Um, I move, we approve the request treated, sorry. I move, we approve the request that street closure and alcohol permit for Kagan Cask Festival.
Councillor Coker, I will second.
Whitney made the motion and councillor Coker second. Um, it's open for discussion. Council, um, please raise your hands if you have anything you would like to say about this or questions. Uh, councillor Bjornson, I think I saw your hand. Yep, I did there.
I was just curious if um, anybody knows why Kagan Cask didn't move to Green Waters? Was that um, effort made? I wasn't involved. I didn't know about Kagan Cask that long ago. I had just moved here in oh nine, so um, I, this is the first I'd heard about it. So does anybody know if that was tried and if it was tried, why didn't it work out?
I want to interject here um, to remind council that what we are, what we are voting on and looking at is a request for the year twenty twenty. Uh, each request that is made for an event is independent of one another. Um, not to, um, to uh, to lighten um, the impact that this has on Ms. Kelly. But I think to go back to try to analyze why this was happened here or there and why they did or did not is mute. Um, I think we can definitely ask if there's a reason why it has to be at this location and not at Green Waters or not on another block. Um, I don't know. Brian, can you tell me if um, Amy is there?
Just for clarification, I was basically asking why this block and not elsewhere. I wasn't trying to go hat, rehash and analyze things. I just, it's a simple question.
Well, you did ask why we made that decision in the past. So um, I, I don't want to go back to that, but that's a good question, Melissa. Let's get that. Uh, Brian, go ahead.
Uh, Amy Kelly is on the, on the line by telephone.
Okay, Amy?
I am here. Uh, I, I I can't answer for the past. I've only been here since two thousand fifteen. I have personally spoken with Nancy um, regarding everything and I also, and this was two years ago when um, when I took over his chair and of course, we didn't have the event last year. Um, I took her concerns and we revamped our map to where um, certain uh, vendors would not be down near her home. So it would be more accommodating um, in that aspect. I do realize that it still cordons off the front of her house, um, but it does not restrict from access to her house off the side street. So um, you know, we moved that, the, the music is down at the opposite end from her. Um, the notices will go out within four hundred feet of the event to all businesses and residential neighbors. Um, and I believe, if you give me a second, I believe we have a timeframe of we can't do it any sooner than twenty one days prior to the event and um, or yeah, no sooner than twenty one days prior to the event. And no uh, no later than fourteen days. So we really have to, you know, basically three weeks and then two weeks to uh, to get the notice out to the, to the public and the community. Um, but as far as it ever being entertained to go to Green Waters, the only knowledge I know of that was by myself last year during COVID shutdown. And the stick, the COVID regulations would not have allowed us to use the two block pers- area and be able to have a um, thriving event. Um, at that, it still was not even feasible, Green Waters to hold because of the COVID restrictions last year. Um, that was the only reason I brought up Green Waters because like years past, it is a street festival and that is kind of how it's been designed. And it was, you know, its inception has been the street festival. Um, and these have been the two blocks that have been used. I can't speak to anything in the past.
I understand that, Amy. Thank you for uh, for making that clarification. I appreciate that. Um, councillors, do you have any other questions? Looking here. Okay. If there are no further questions, then um, Jackie, will you please call for a vote?
Yes. Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Councillor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Nope.
Councillor Whitney? Mayor Holston?
Aye, that pass says, thank you, council. Let's move on to um, RTMP funding allocations, eleven point one. Um, we have uh, agenda bill in front of us and uh, Brian, my, my throat is about had it, so I'm going to ask you to read.
Okay, um, the RTMP committee met and made some recommended allocations to uh, people that had applied. Uh, the exhibits are those allocations and the uh, the basic idea of what the program is for twenty twenty one. Um, and they met, as I said, twice. The fiscal impact has recommended nine thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars across all the people asking. Uh, your options are to approve or reject or modify the RTMP allocations. We're recommending approval. Uh, the motion's there before you and uh, if you'd like, that can go out to the
Thank you. Um, council, RTMP committee did meet. Um, and these were the recommendations that we brought forward. We had a very healthy discussion over three meetings, Don? Three, I think.
One was cancelled because of um
Okay, two meetings. Um, about the allocations and, and the use of the RTMP funds and holding back some in reserve to be able to use for other, um, other uh, tourism. Um, and events or opportunities that we have. Um, it is, was there, our recommendation, as you see before you, that we award, as what you're seeing under the approved item, um, to the individuals that are um, that have requested. I will point out that um, the Oak Ridge Triple Summit Challenge, this is, this will be their third year. They know that this is the last year that they can get that. Um, so we have a usually a three-year period for those that, that are profitable events. Um, so it's before you. Can we have a motion?
Um, I move, we approve the RTMP fund allocation as recommended by the RTMP committee.
Wait a second. I will second that then. Motion made by councillor Whitney, seconded by Mayor Holston. Let's open this up for discussion. Motion made by Counselor Whitney, seconded by Mayor Holston. Let's open this up for discussion. Counsel, do you have any discussion? Okay, no discussion whatsoever.
Counselor Kenyon.
I have my hand. Well, they just now all three popped up. My apologies that my computer must be a bit slow. Counselor Hollitt, I see your hand, Counsel Bjornson and Counsel Kenyon. Um, so I will start with Counsel Hollitt. Um, go ahead, please.
Uh, my question has a lot to do with profit versus nonprofit and. Um, I was just hoping that Counselor Kenyon, are you the chair of this committee?
No, Kathy.
Kathy, you're the chair. Um, Mayor Holston, are you able to explain what the rules are on um? How that's awarded for um events that are profit versus nonprofit? Are all of those nonprofit groups?
They're not all nonprofit groups and those that have a have have a profit have a three-year.
Oh.
Um, three-year window that they can give funds from RTMP. After three years, they can no longer get that. Uh, that is not the same case with nonprofits. Um, they don't have a limit as to how many years they can do that. And I am actually looking through the documentation to make sure. And that question is asked on the on the on the RTMP questionnaire. So it's not something that we just guess at.
So who's putting together the West for fifty K? Do you know?
Kevin Benz Coy. That's what it says on the list here.
I'm sorry, I can't see it all.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see that part.
So Devon is doing both the Triple Summit Challenge as well as the West for fifty K.
Okay. So then the concerts in the park, tree planting, keg and cask and the art events gallery. Those groups can ask for money basically every year. There is no limit.
Yes, it stands, yes, because they are nonprofits.
Okay. All right, I think that's all the questions I have.
Counsel Kenyon, I saw you wanted to say something. I'm assuming it's about what I just said.
Yeah, you cut out. I didn't hear a word.
Well, um. Um, anyway. I I surely wish Mr. Barclay, you would stop putting things in the chat. It really disrupts the the flow, but that's okay. Um, I, what I said was that it is up to us to determine whether it's a yes or a no, but profit profitable events have three years. Nonprofits have an open-ended thing, so. Um, Counselor Bjornson, go ahead.
Yeah, I was curious about that same status. Um, as part of the applications, um, are the, do they provide you with their five oh one C three? Or do do they just tell you, yes, we're for profit, no, we're. For nonprofit.
Ask for a five oh one three C, we just ask them whether a profit or a nonprofit and that questionnaire is in your packet. You're welcome. Um, Counsel Kenyon, go ahead and then Counsel Spleedoff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that um the the committee, the RTMP committee, excuse me. Had met last year to go over all this and had decided to um or agreed to review and update the process. And and policy for this committee, um, because over the years, there's been so much. Confusion and um different uh just differing opinions about what what. So um this year with a strong request from our citizen member on the committee. We are actually going to move forward with the process of um. Coming up with a policy or um, I I don't know exactly what to call it, but a procedure. To present to the council as a recommendation. And we also still need to, as a council, uh, consider the. The new resolution. We still have not formalized the new resolution for that. So that's something else that will be coming. Just FYI.
Yes, um, the West for fifty K, we're second, is that going to be held in Westford or Oak Ridge? Or where is it? Where's it start?
I believe it's a joint effort between the two, um, just as the last um gravel grinder or the gravel event that we just saw. Started here and ended in Westford. I think it is a is a combination in the same in the same manner.
Okay, because I was wondering, you know, how West was tied into. To Oak Ridge over here and and our benefit from that.
Benefit because we have, we have overflow into both communities. Um, we have the larger um larger restaurant and lodging area. So obviously that overflows into us and uh West Spurs also contributing to it also. You're welcome. Counsel Hollitt.
I'm sorry, I'll take my hand down.
Took my hand down, Kathy. Audi had asked my question already.
Okay, good, good. Glad to see it. Um, and so if there are no further questions, I don't see any. Um, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Holston.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Counselor Coker. Counselor Spleedoff.
I.
Counselor Hollitt. Counselor Kenyon.
I, Sir Hollitt.
I.
For Kenyon. Counselor Bjornson.
I.
On then to um item fourteen point one, Brian.
Mayor, it's actually thirteen. We have public hearings.
All right. Hold on, where am I? Mid my agenda, Brian, and right now I s- I see fourteen point one.
No, it's it's the page before that. It's thirteen point one, open public hearing resolution zero six twenty twenty, state revenue sharing funds.
Well, I. Oh, I see what I'm looking at. I see my agenda thirteen for one. Okay, we are now moving into um the public hearing portion of our. Of our um of our meeting. Um, we are going to start with thirteen point one. This is the open public hearing for resolution oh six two oh twenty twenty. Use of the state revenue sharing funds and. Brian, do I have that to read?
There's background on the screen now that talks about sharing for the vote.
Okay. I don't know why it's not on my other one. That's very weird. Um, Department of Administrative Services is responsible for certification of cities. For state shared revenues. The law provides that cities located within the county pass an ordinance or resolution approving participation. These state revenue sharing laws, ORS two two one seven seven zero, require cities to annually pass a resolution requesting state revenue sharing money. A copy of this resolution must be filed with the Office of the Business Administration before July thirty-first. Our um options are to adopt the resolution or to not adopt the resolution. Um, the fiscal impact would be significant to the city's budget. If it is not passed, loss of these revenues would make a large impact on our budget. Do I hear a motion?
Sorry, Mayor, that that was, that was just the preamble to the public hearing.
Right. Go ahead. Um, hold on, my my. Slow this here. All right, so we are going to open up the public hearing. Um, at this time, um, we are going to entertain statements. In favor of accepting the state revenue sharing funds. I will ask again, whoops, hold on, are there statements in favor? And if there are, again, I will ask if there are statements in, whoops, I see Trudy Hammond's hand pop up. Trudy, do you have a statement in favor?
I'm in favor. That's it.
You, Trudy Hammond. Counselor Bjornson, I see a hand up.
Um, I'm sorry if I am interrupting the wrong portion, but because this has to do with part of the budget. I feel like I should declare my potential conflict.
All right, um, so at this point, we're just taking statements. When we get to the council discussion, I will ask for anyone who wants to declare a conflict, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
You are welcome. Counselor Coker, is that what you were going to ask also?
No, ma'am. I'm highly in favor of this. This helps our city and we need to pass this. Thank you.
I appreciate that, counselor. Um, this is an opportunity for the public to say they're in favor or against. Um, but I certainly appreciate your input. All right, so let's move to statements in opposition. Are there statements in opposition? Are there any statements for the second time in opposition? Are there any statements in opposition for the third time? Seeing none, I will move to statements in general. Are there statements from the public in general? Are there statements for the second from the public in general? And for the third time, are there statements from the public in general? Seeing no statements in general, I am closing this public hearing on the use of state revenue sharing funds. And I am opening a discussion for counsel. Counsel, do you have any questions about this or any discussion? Counselor Coker has already expressed her opinion and said that she feels this is vital. Is there anyone else who wishes to say anything?
Um, I agree with Counselor Coker.
All right. Oh, Counsel Spleedoff, I see your hand.
Yes, I agree that we should do this.
Thank you, Counselor Spleedoff. All right, um, let's uh, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please? But Miss Counsel Bjornson, I see your hand.
Sorry, you said council discussion, so I was wondering about the conflict.
It's a good thing you guys are staying on top of this. That's very, very, very good. At this time, if there are any counselors. Who wish to declare a conflict of interest, um, I am happy to recognize them now. Counsel Bjornson, go ahead.
Yes, I want to declare a potential conflict of in- interest because I'm on the volunteer roster with the Oak Ridge Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hollitt, I see your hand up.
I am declaring a actual conflict of interest because my husband is employed by the city of Oak Ridge. Under a collective bargaining unit agreement through the union and I will not be voting.
Thank you, Counsel Hollitt. Um, Counsel Spleedoff, I see your hand up.
Was there a motion made?
Not yet. No, not yet. We're getting there and good for you, Counsel Spleedoff. Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. And so if we go to thirteen point one, can I hear a motion?
Uh, Mayor, they've queued up both the public hearings, uh, run right after the other and then the motions are actually further down. Unless you want to take. In the order.
No, I don't want to take them on individually. Yeah, I don't know why, for some reason, what I'm looking at, I'm I'm is confusing me a bit. So my, please be patient just a sec while I get down to where I need to be. Evidently, I don't know where I am.
It'll be thirteen.
Okay. Okay, thirteen point two. Brian, put that up on the screen for me. Thank you. Oh, okay. All right, Brian, can you read this?
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Uh, city council is required to adopt a balanced budget annually. This budget will provide us with a basis for evaluating city's financial position in the fiscal year. A year in which difficult discussions will be required to raise funding for services and significantly reduce costs and thus likely. And most likely service or level of services of citizens. And this will be the public hearing for the budget passing.
All right, at this time, I'm hoping night, opening up the public hearing for the passing of the budget. We will be entertaining first statements in favor. I am going to take a look at the participant schedule here. And those of you who wish to make a comment on statements in favor, I would appreciate it if you would. If you would raise your hands now. Or. Unmute yourself. Oh, so I see um Sarah Ultimus Pope has a hand up. I'm looking for others to, let's start with you, Sarah. Please go ahead.
Give me a second here. I'm starting my timer, so I watch.
As am I.
So um, so I guess I'm gonna register uh this under statements in favor and passing a budget. I think it's really important that we have a budget and we don't go into furlough or any kind of uh situation like that. But I'm gonna qualify my statements in favor with some comments. So what I'd like to say tonight is about the proposed fee. And the fiscal impact there to the community. I'm a little confused because there was a lot of comments earlier, but I think this is the right time to be mentioning this. Is this okay? Yeah, okay. Um, so I understand the financial emergency we're in. Um, I do support a temporary rate for emergency services to be added to the water bill. As a stopgap. Um, because it has that exemption for low income. Uh, I think that's the one thing for me that makes it uh palatable. Um, but I qualify my support with a couple of uh things I would like the council to consider if they do move move forward with this proposal. One being, um, I would like there there to be established a fire uh districting commission or committee. To look at the feasibility of creating a fire district with Hazel Dell and possibly Lowell and Dexter if they would. I know this has been discussed in the past and looked at in the past, but I don't know if there's really been a true uh investigation of this as a possibility. To make things more feasible. I think that we have um the right skill set in the community to do that and I would volunteer to be on this committee if needed. So I will hope that the council would consider that if they do pass this fee. And then also, um, I would uh request that the council consider. A serious levy effort to be started as soon as possible to uh propose the levy again, um, to go to the voters on this topic. Um, I don't like the idea of this being a reoccurring fee for three years that could turn into a permanent fix. I think that the hard work of passing a levy needs to be done. I think people would comment and I have heard comments to the effect that it went to the voters voters last November and they voted it down, but I'd like to remind the council of this. It did go to the voters, but a serious outreach did not start until September of twenty twenty, two months before elections. Um, this happened during an election that was a very political and uh. Uh, the national election kind of took all the oxygen out of the room around other issues. So I think that took most of people's attention. Plus, we're in COVID and it was very hard to come together and have public meetings and talk about this. I do think there would be community support for a levy to support our emergency services. Um, but I think there need to be discussion about that and I think it'd be much more appropriate to put that fee onto the uh property taxes. Um, of the of people in the community and not to the renters that live in these homes. And then last, I'd like to remind the council that while the voters did vote down that levy that was proposed, um, without much information around it. They did elect many of you in council that ran on a platform of emergency services. I did look back through Facebook and a lot of the comments and discussion. That was had by counselors that were running and you did say that you supported emergency services. So I'd like to seek counsel to do the work be uh. Uh, in support of that and really come to us as voters and talk to us about what what funds are needed, what exactly they would be spent on. And put that forward in a levy. So that's my uh. My qualified support for this fee or some sort of stopgap that could get us to the point point where we could find a way to pay for these services. That we do know we need and um. And if I have one more minute, I just want to. Okay, am I up on time?
You're up on time.
Okay, thanks, all right, that's it.
Is there any other statements in favor of? And I am looking, Brian, I don't see any other hands.
No, nothing at the whack either.
Okay, thank you. So now I am going to call for statements, statements in opposition, and I will call it three times. I see a hand of Elizabeth Barkley. Go ahead, please, Ms. Barkley. You'll, you'll need to unmute yourself. I don't hear anybody yet, so I'm going to move on. Is there anybody else who would like to express in opposition? Now I see Dan Barkley's hand, and I see the Blue Wolf. So Dan, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize you first and then the Blue Wolf. Go ahead, please. Dan, I don't hear you either. Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you, Dan. Yes, Dan, I can hear you now.
So I've got my own comment, but he is going to get her iPad unmuted. So I'm gonna turn my sound off, she'll turn her sound off, and may as well let, let the Blue Wolf go ahead while we get coordinated between all this.
Right, back to you then, thank you. Go ahead and mute yourself. Blue Wolf, go ahead, please.
I, yeah. We just kind of want to reiterate.
Would you please identify yourself?
Mahala at Blue Wolf Motel 47465 Highway 58. I kind of want to reiterate because I do pride myself in reading all of these things that come out, so I'm very, very well.
Mahala, your, Mahala, your connection is, is pretty poor. Having a very difficult time hearing you. I don't think that's just me, is it Brian?
Same with me too.
It's the same on my end too, Kathy.
Okay, Mahala, I'm gonna come back to you. Might want to call in, Mahala, you might want to call in on your phone.
Can you come and help me?
I heard that, pretty good. Okay, thank you. So let's pop back, and Elizabeth, do you think we'll be able to hear you now, or Dan?
You hear me now?
Okay, whom am I speaking with, Dan?
No, you're speaking to Elizabeth Barkley.
Oh, okay, go ahead, please Elizabeth.
My name is Elizabeth Barkley. 47501 Highway 58. In the United States, a water service contract is a type of contract authorized by the Reclamation Project Act of 1939, whereby water is furnished for irrigation on multi municipal or miscellaneous purposes at taxes to produce revenue sufficient to cover charges reimbursable to the federal government. My question is a two-part question to the person who designed this public safety fee ordinance, and I do require an answer. On whose legal authority, either local, state, or federal, were you given to alter the payments and division of monies on my official water contract service? My second part of this question is, is a city required to follow the rules of the Public Utilities Commission of the State of Oregon under Chapter 860? Thank you.
And I would, I will say that this is public comment on the budget, not on the ordinance. Public Safety Fee 937.
I'll be back.
So, and I will hold your thoughts in remembrance. I have written your questions down, but I just want to let you know that. Okay, Dan, I see your hand up still.
This is a Barkley with a deeper voice, and we just, we just jumped in on.
Sounds good to me.
13 because we weren't certain that we'd be participating in section 14 when they get to the resolution part. Anyhow, I can hold my comments till 14 if that, if that.
That is what it is specific to, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I just figured chair had already opened the door on talking about the fee.
All right, thank you. And Blue Wolf, I'm gonna go back to you to see if we can hear you better. If you would like to unmute yourself and give it a try, I'm more than willing to give you a try too. All right, Mahala, I'm going to move on then. I want to ask for, for comments in, in opposition for the second time. I will ask for comments in opposition. And Mahala, I just see that you're trying to dial in, and I see Jan, you have your hand up. Do you have comments in opposition? If you do, go ahead. Unmute yourself, please. You are muted.
As a budget committee member, I felt like I didn't have enough time to really dissect the budget. And looking at today's budget stuff here, I see a lot of changes that kind of went up and some that went down, and, and I just, I don't know that I'm ready to say I'm in favor of these changes. And I also would like to know more about, more detail in the line item, like the PERS. That, that's like a great big chunk of money, and it doesn't really explain everything that it's for. So I'd be against it. That's it.
Thank you. And Mahala, I'm gonna come back to you just to make sure. All right, for the third time, I've called in for comments in opposition, hearing none. I'm gonna move to comments in general. Are there any comments in general? Councillor, councillor, Trudy Hammond, I see council, I see your hand up for in general.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, 47752 Berry Street. I do agree with what, what Jan had said and a portion of what Sarah was talking about, the longevity being a three-year. I think that that kind of needs to get, like you say, a temporary gap, but definitely not three-year. I do believe that would also kind of solidify itself. Thank you.
And so I'm going to ask for a second time for comments in general, and a third time for comments in general.
Kathy, I have my hand up.
And as councillors, you will have an opportunity to comment during council. This is for the public to comment, not as councillors.
I, I just wanted to give a comment that the person from the Blue Wolf said they're gonna try and call in.
I know, I saw that too, and I've been watching, but I don't see a call in yet, so. You know, should that happen, we will address it. Thank you councillor Kenyon. All right, so this public hearing is now closed. I will move to council comments and council discussion. Council, this is your opportunity to make comments on what you've heard as well as your own. Councillor Coker, go ahead.
You hear me?
I do.
All right, thank you. So one of my biggest concerns is with the $31 fee that is being proposed. Is that going to be for like motels on the, for example? Every single room, every single trailer space? Are we talking, this fee is going to be for the entire EMS district, not just people that have water bills? I'm a little confused on that, so before I make my final decision, I'd like to know.
Okay, I'm gonna interject here just a little bit. We, we, in front of us are voting on adopting the budget. Part of that budget includes that public safety fee, as, as we all know, having sat on the budget committee for, for a couple of months. We also, after having approved the budget, then have the public safety ordinance. Without the passing of the ordinance, there is no teeth for it to be in the budget. Regardless of, of where we end up with this, it is imperative that we pass a budget. And I know that sounds contradictory, but what I'm trying to explain is that I would, I want us to concentrate on passing the budget, and then we can talk about the ordinance. If we choose not to pass the budget, the, the ordinance, that has no teeth in, in the budget, and we're gonna have to rework it. But we will have at least passed a budget so that we can move on as far as making sure that we have the ability to pay our bills, pay our taxes, to pay our employees. So food for thought. So Brian or Eric, I, I want to make sure I've explained that completely and, and clearly, and I'm not, I want to make counsel, I want you to understand that I'm not trying to tell you what to do. I'm just trying to make sure you understand the process of what we're about to do here.
I could, mayor, it's the CA. So what I did call the Department of Revenue, Harland, who gave the training, as I put together this agenda and kind of mentioned to him, there could be a possibility where you pass the budget, but you don't pass the ordinance and you don't pass the resolution, which establishes the rate of the fee, or you do pass it. So what he said is, it's anticipated revenue in the budget, and it's fine to pass it. However, if the ordinance doesn't pass, and you don't have the authority to exercise that, and so you would go to a supplemental budget in the new year and account for that revenue that no longer is there, either through reductions in expenditures or revenue from somewhere else.
Brian, councillor Kenyon, go ahead.
Actually councillor Bjornson was before me, if you want.
You, thank you councillor Bjornson, go ahead.
Yeah, I think Brian just answered my question. I was gonna ask how we could pass the budget with the fee in it without passing the fee itself, so I think that was answered.
I can see your lips, oh, okay. Yeah, that's kind of, one I wanted to make sure is, if we pass the budget, we're not passing the, the resolutions on the budget.
The ordinance, no, we're not.
We're not passing, we're just passing the budget. Okay.
Councillor Kenyon, go ahead.
Um, well, since we're having a, well, the hearing's over, but council discussion regarding the budget, it, it would make me very uncomfortable to pass a budget that has a fee listed in it, regardless of whether or not, if the fee part doesn't pass. Because that, I feel like we need to be discussing how we could, what our other options are, and I, I have a statement I want to make regarding that.
Or do you want to wait until the ordinance? I mean, I guess what my question is, is having heard what the CA related in his direction that he got from, from the State of Oregon, what question do you have about that? As far as passing the budget, and then on the understanding that unless we pass the ordinance, that anticipated income will not be there. So then we need to do a supplemental budget, and that's where, if we don't pass it, if for some reason we don't, then we have to hammer out what is that supplemental budget gonna look like?
When would we do that supplemental budget?
We'd start doing it ASAP.
Okay.
As in, as in, what do you mean, a week, two weeks, three weeks?
Well, if we can start meeting next week, we would start meeting next week. Because it's not gonna be an easy one to do, if indeed you want to do that. I mean, if, if that's the direction it goes, I mean, I mean, I can't anticipate a vote here, but if that's the direction it goes, you're gonna have to start meeting to figure out what that supplemental budget is gonna be. And the supplemental budget we're be working on will come into effect, or the budget will come into effect in July 1, and then we would be able to pass the supplemental budget. That doesn't mean we don't have, we can't, we don't have to wait that long to start working on it, though.
I'm, I'm a little confused, then. You're saying we pass it the way it is, but then we put in a supplemental budget after, after it's over, and then July 1, we start doing supplemental budget.
I know it sounds like it's the cart before the horse, and I said the same thing until we got the direction from, from the State of Oregon. I thought, well, why are we doing the budget? Well, it's imperative that we have the budget, because July 1, if we haven't passed the budget, nothing opens. That means the police don't run, the fire don't run. Nothing. And I don't want to put my community through that.
Okay, I'd like to have a clarification, what this $31 fee is, because I think I read in there is for police, ambulance, and fire. Is that correct? Because I hear a lot of people saying it's only for the ambulance service.
Okay, so I'm working to get, get in this budget, but council, this is where we are at right now. We've just had a public hearing on the budget. If you want an answer about the next proposed public safety fee ordinance, which is the next one, we, we will need to, to stop this and move on to it. Now, we, we can have some discussion about it if you would like, but I'm, I think what we're doing is, is confusing the issue a little bit. I know this sounds backwards, but if unless you pass the ordinance, there is no teeth in it whatsoever, and it will not, it won't automatically go into effect. But we do need to have the budget.
And mayor, if I might, there's a reason it's only the first reading for the ordinance, because I just, I, I know the public needs time to, to review this and to understand it. And so that's why it was only, it wasn't, I wasn't trying to jam it into one session and get passed. I wanted to allow it to go into the next meeting to be reviewed. It's a first reading of an ordinance, and we don't even have to do that. We can pass this budget in anticipation that the revenue will get there, and if it doesn't, then we'll do a supplemental. If it does, then we will use that revenue.
We have the budget now, but we're gonna do a first and second reading of the ordinance, is what I'm saying, is what Brian just said. So councillor, councillor Coker, then councillor, well, hold on, councillor Spleedoff. I'm sorry, I'm sure you have more.
Yes, is this, is this considered as a false budget, then?
No, it's not a false budget, and you're reading the chat form.
No, no, I'm asking myself.
Well, it's not a, it's not a false budget.
Because you're saying that there's a $31 fee in here for the public, and yet it's in the budget, is that? And it's stricted, but yet we're gonna pass it, and it's not if we haven't, if we don't pass the resolution.
You know. It, it's, CA, I can only tell you what the Department of Revenue told me specifically when I asked him, and he said, it's perfectly fine to use it and pass the budget with an anticipated revenue. We get all sorts of anticipated revenue that doesn't come, whether it be a grand or something else. So I, I can't do any more than that. I checked with the, the Department of Revenue for the State of Oregon, and they said, the way it was set up here is fine.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Kenyon, and then councillor Coker.
Um, I just was gonna point out that I'm, I'm not gonna even get into my opinions about the whole thing right. my opinions about the whole thing right now until we actually get to the resolution to adopt the budget, cuz right now, I think you already kinda mentioned it, Kathy, I think this discussion is kind of a waste of time. We should do this discussion under the budget section of the meeting.
We are in the budget section of the meeting.
No, we haven't done fourteen point one, or fourteen point two, or fourteen point three, I mean, fourteen point three is the budget. We're still at thirteen point two point five.
Then what you're suggesting is that we pull these all apart, because if you notice that the, the suggested motion includes all of them.
What? Where's the motion?
Let's, Mayor, if we might, can we just move on to fourteen point one?
We can. If you would like to do that.
The, what, what your, I think what, what the confusion is, is that the adoption of the budget includes three separate issues that are all in one, one motion. One is what is setting the avalanche taxes, one is accepting the, well, let me go to it, I'll show you. So it, the resolution, with the resolution, when you adopt it, it will be adopting the budget, making appropriations, and lastly, imposing and categorizing the tax. Those are the three things that happen when you pass the budget.
But the fee is already figured into the budget. That's what has me concerned.
It's anticipated revenue. If it doesn't come as anticipated, then that's why you would do a supplemental budget.
Okay, let's take a step back then. So, um, the resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Right?
Uh, fourteen point one is, is the resolution certifying the city of Oak Ridge provides the required municipal services for state funding, so that, that was, that's the first step, and then we go into receive state revenues, and then we go into adopting the budget.
So then fourteen point two is the declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the recommended motion is to, to adopt six, twenty twenty-one, which is the election for that, correct?
Right. The resolution that says you wanna receive state revenues.
Have we done that?
No, we, we first would be to certify the city's services, cuz unless you certify them, you can't take shared revenues.
Fourteen point one is what we need.
Point one is what we need to do. So let's, let's take care of fourteen point one, and then fourteen point two. And then we'll move into fourteen point three. Dawn, would you like to make a motion here for fourteen point one?
I can't see one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Maybe you had it in front of you, too.
I move with that resolution oh five dash twenty twenty-one, certifying the city of Oak Ridge provides four or more required municipal services to be eligible for state funding.
I'll second.
By Counsel Kenyon, and seconded by Counsel Whitney. So, is there any further discussion on, on that portion of state funding?
Can we just have Brian read the issue and whatnot?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian. Reread it for me.
Yep, resolution certifying the city of Oak Ridge provides the required municipal services for state funding, and the resolution's oh five twenty twenty-one, and it's the certification. And the fiscal impact of the taxes you see here, highway, marijuana, liquor, and cigarette. And it's recommending that you adopt resolution oh five twenty twenty-one. The actual services, as you can see here, police, fire, street, sanitary, storm sewers, planning, and water utility services are the, are the services we provide. And that's the resolution, so. Motion's before you. Which has already been.
Kenyon, I see your hand up. Is that still, did you wanna say something?
I do, but I did accidentally leave it up, so if someone wants to go before me, I'm okay with that.
Okay, is there anyone else, counsel? No? Yes, no, I don't see any. Go ahead, Counsel Kenyon.
Okay, so I have a question on the state revenue sharing. I know that it states up there above on your little document that it's the cigarette, marijuana, liquor, and highway taxes. But I have looked through the budget multiple times, and I see all of those lines. And I also see an additional line that's simply called state revenue sharing. So what do you suppose that extra line with like thirty-two thousand dollars of revenue, where that, where does that come from if the cigarettes and all the other ones are on their own lines with their own amounts?
I'll defer to Eric at the other answer off the top of his head. Eric, are you still with us? Okay, barring that, I, I would guess that we're, is marijuana also on there? I'm not on the right page in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, marijuana is on there, and the state marijuana and the local marijuana are both on separate lines. Cigarettes on a separate line, liquor's on a separate line.
Um, so I, I can't tell you, give you an answer without doing the research. If I'd had the question somewhat earlier, I could, I could do that.
Okay, oh, uh, yeah. I'll, I'll just email you, hear it later.
Hands up. Eric, go ahead.
Sorry, did I just miss a question?
Yeah.
What was it?
Do you know what the extra line is for state revenue sharing? And by that, I mean we have a line for cigarette tax, a line for liquor, et cetera, et cetera. And then we also have an additional line that simply says state revenue sharing for thirty-two thousand two hundred.
Can you tell me what document you're looking at?
The budget.
Okay. Um, give me one second to pull it up.
Not have it all written. And it's on the off-line resource page line, I think I saw seventeen, but I'll confirm. Line twenty-seven. Well. It changed on yours, so it's on line twenty-nine on yours.
Oh, okay.
And then if you look above the other cigarette and marijuana taxes are above that individually.
I can't answer what that is without look in at the accounting software, which I can't log in and look at that right now, cuz we're doing Zoom.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll send, I'll send you an email, and we can talk about it after.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Revenue, that is shared with the state, the cities by, by, by means of their population. They get a distribution according to their population. I think that's what you'll find, Eric, but I'd love to hear the formal answer. Okay. All right, Jackie, can you call for a vote, please?
Counsel Whitney?
Hi.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Is Counsel Hallit voting, or is it just on?
I already stated an actual conflict of interest and stated I would not be voting. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Coker? Mayor Holston? Counselor Kenyon?
I.
Move on to the next one, then.
And Mayor, just for your awareness, it's, it's nine o'clock straight up.
So, um, I am going to move forward in thirty-minute increments, if you're okay with that. Okay, um, so let's move on to fourteen point two. This is the state, right, Brian?
Yep, declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, fourteen point two, that's resolution zero six twenty twenty-one. We need to have council approval to participate in the revenue sharing program. It's a significant part of the city's budget. A loss would make a large impact. And we've already been, before the public hearing, read through the background, you have the option to adopt or not adopt zero six twenty twenty-one. We're recommending to adopt it in the motions before you.
Sorry. Um, I move we adopt resolution zero six dash two zero two one, declaring the city's election to receive state res- revenues.
I'll second.
Spleedoff seconded it.
So he's just gonna have to wait till tomorrow, or he can get back.
Um, do we have any discussion? If there's no discussion, Jackie, will you call for a vote? Dawn, your hands up, and I'm sorry. Your hands up, I see it. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to to request that if, after we're done with this, we either take a break or decide to move the remainder to a next meeting if if anyone else is interested. I wanna make sure we talk about that.
All right, that's kinda why I mentioned that it was thirty-minute increments, but we'll go on. Counsel Hallit, did you have something to say?
Um, this is a, a new resolution, correct?
Yes.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and state another actual conflict of interest, cuz my husband is employed by the city of Oak Ridge through a collective bargaining unit through the I A double F Union. I will not be voting on this resolution.
Thank you, Counsel Hallit. Counsel Bjornson?
I wanna declare my potential conflict as well. Again, I am a volunteer, I'm on the volunteer roster with the fire department.
Thank you, Counsel Bjornson. All right, Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
Counsel Coker?
Hi.
Counsel Kenyon?
I.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Counselor Whitney?
I.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Hi.
That passes, thank you, council. Let's move on to fourteen, well, before we move on, as noted at the nine o'clock hour, we are at nine o'clock. I suggested that we move forward in thirty-minute increments. Having heard nothing, I proceed.
My hands up.
Just a minute. Having heard nothing at that time, I proceeded. Counsel, Counsel Kenyon would like us to discuss whether or not we wanna move forward now. Go ahead, Counsel Kenyon.
I just wanna say that I am okay with moving forward as long as everyone else is, but I would like a break. I would like to use the restroom and get some more water before I proceed, and I do anticipate this being a long discussion.
I do, too.
On my part, so if, if we wanna move it to another day, that's fine with me.
Counsel Hallit?
Counsel Hallit? I'm sorry, I forgot to put my hand down.
All right, so council, by hand wave, Counsel Spleedoff?
Yes, I also would like a, a little break.
Happy with doing a break. Let's do a five-minute break. Is everybody okay with moving forward past the break? Yes, please unmute yourself.
Yes, I am, Kathy.
Yes, okay. All right, that sounds good. So it's nine oh four, we will come back in at nine ten. Or, yes, nine ten. It's nine ten, everyone, and we are calling resuming our meeting after having had a break. I wanna make sure that everybody, that all of my counselors are here. Let's do a quick call out when I call your name, Counsel Kenyon. I don't think Counsel Kenyon is back. Counsel Spleedoff?
Yes.
Counselor Hollitt, here. Here. Counselor Whitney?
Yeah.
Counselor Kenyon? Here. Counselor Bjornson?
I'm here.
Called everybody, right? Yes, awesome. Alright, let's resume. Where we were here.
Fourteen point, premier.
Thank you.
It's the resolution adoption of the twenty one twenty two budget and imposing and categorizing taxes. Looking for a motion from the board to approve. Exhibits of the resolution zero seven twenty twenty one and then the budget itself. You're required to adopt the balanced budget annually. This budget will provide us basis for evaluating the city's financial position in the new fiscal year. The budget is eight million nine hundred and fifty four dollars. Your options are to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget or don't approve it. We're recommending option one and the motions before you.
Mayor, I can't hear you. Counselor Kenyon, is that better?
Yes, now I can.
Okay. May I hear a motion from the council? If I hear no motion, this will die and we will have no budget.
Kathy, this is Bobby. I move that we approve Resolution zero seven dash two zero two one adopting the fiscal year. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget in the amount of eight million. Nine hundred and fifty four dollars, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes.
Wait here a second. I will second it. Counselor Whitney made the motion and I second, the mayor seconded it. Let's open this up for discussion. Go ahead, please, counsel.
This is Counselor Hollitt. I am going to declare an actual conflict of interest. I am married to, my spouse is an employee for the City of Oak Ridge. And is under a collective bargaining unit agreement with the IAF fire union. I will not be voting on the budget.
Counselor Bjornson.
This is Counselor Bjornson. I am declaring a potential conflict of interest. I'm on the volunteer roster for the fire department.
Noted. Alright, counsel. Do we have any discussion? Counselor Kenyon, go ahead, please.
Firstly, I would like to ask Counselor Whitney. If she could please describe why she's no longer declaring a conflict even though she did multiple times during budget.
That is an inappropriate question. Each counselor determined whether they have a conflict of interest and cannot be questioned by another counselor.
Actually, I think that's not true Kathy and our RCA questioned at a budget committee meeting why somebody wasn't declaring conflict. I believe it states in state law that everyone can question it.
Council meeting is different than our budget meeting. That is up to each individual counselor to declare whether or not they have an interest or not. Is not up to any of us to question whether or not their interest is right or wrong, and we will not go into that. Counselor Kenyon, did you have a question?
I do. Actually, I don't have. I have a statement and a lot of things I want to discuss. First of all.
Before you go on, I would now address the question that you had for me because I do not have a conflict of interest. Or a potential conflict of interest. Since my brother was let go from the city, he has received zero monies from the city and he is no longer. Doing any sort of contractual work with the city. He submitted a letter to the city letting them know. That he would no longer be doing that because he had other interests in other places.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Whitney, for providing what you did not have to provide. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead, please.
Okay, this budget proposal only balances because it includes. An imposed fee. I have been against imposing this fee since the day that our budget officer presented it. The attempt to make the ambulance. Did someone just interrupt me?
No.
Okay. I thought I heard it. The attempt to make the ambulance department look as if it had a shortfall was by withholding their tax and shared revenue funding. That we were required to transfer for fire protection by a city policy that has been followed. Ever since measure five passed until this proposed budget. I believe that the city's been trying to blame the shortfall in the fire and ambulance for several years, assuming that citizens. Will pay more to keep those services. I challenge anyone to look at the budget that was proposed in April. It's posted on the city website. And prove that I am wrong about the withholding of your taxes to fund the fire department. You will find it on the last page of the general fund on line sixteen, zero dollars transferred out of the general fund to the emergency services fund. And if you look in the emergency services fund on line five in the revenue section, you will see zero dollars being transferred in. But drop down to line seventeen in that fund and you will find that. They were proposing to do this imposed fee instead of using your taxes to support the department. During the budget committee meetings, I proposed a motion that follows our policies to fix the improper attempt. And that motion passed. The shortfall is now showing in the budget where it should have been all along. We do not have the revenue from taxes, state shared revenues and grants to support all the programs in the general fund. This has been a problem for many years, slowly depleting all excess saved monies. Library, parks, municipal court, police, the WAC, planning and administration are what make up the general fund. The budget committee passed a motion. To close the WAC within six months because it runs at fifty thousand dollar loss every year. But all other motions to reduce spending in any of these funds failed at the budget committee. I realize that the shortfall is real and the small changes made by the budget committee thus far. Reduced the total that we now need from six hundred and eight thousand down to five hundred and forty. I believe that the city owes it to the citizens to reduce expenditures to further lower the fee. I know that the police and fire departments took cuts during this current year. And we still had to borrow three hundred and fifty thousand from water and wastewater to make it through until now. That reduced our levels of service in public safety. And we have to pay those loans back this coming year, which account for three hundred and fifty thousand out of the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall. It is time for these other programs in the general fund to make the same sacrifices that our public safety departments already have. I would like to see the council go through the general fund budget. Line by line and reduce spending in these other programs to further reduce the need for this fee. And stop allowing the blaming of the ambulance department for the shortfall.
Are you through, Counselor Kenyon?
With my statement and I do have several. Recommendations I'd like to make for reducing our spending. But if we want to continue with more discussion before I get to that, I would be okay with that.
I will do that. In fact, Counselors Spleedoff, go ahead, please.
As we heard from Eric. And both Scott. They are getting money from the ambulance fund, so the ambulance must be supporting themselves. Or why would we be transferring money to the fire department from the ambulance fund? That's what's kind of hard for me to say is, you know, in readout here is. Everybody's saying, well, the ambulance is the one that's overdrawn it. But yet, we're transferring funds from the ambulance to the fire department to keep them up. So. Can anybody answer that?
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Let's go on. You know, we have a lot of other people that maybe want to talk to. Before we start answering back and forth with some of this. Counselors or any other counselors that want to speak?
So I don't get an answer?
Oh, I'm not saying you don't get an answer, Audi. I'm just saying before we do some of this back and forth thing. I just want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to express their opinion. Yes, you will absolutely get your, get an answer to your question. So do we? I suppose Counselor Kenyon has an answer to your question, although it may be biased. So go ahead, Counselor Kenyon, if you want to answer it.
It's absolutely not biased Kathy. It's the actual truth according to our budget. Audi, we do not transfer money from our ambulance fund into our fire department. The only transfers that are made to fire come from the general fund from our tax and state revenue shared dollars. But the rest of everything you said is accurate.
Okay, so. What Eric and Scott both said that they receive funds from the ambulance service is not true then?
I think you may have misunderstood.
Oh, okay.
That they both said that they receive revenue from their ambulance. Which. In addition to receiving the tax money from the general fund which supports their fire.
Yeah, I think you just misunderstood what they said. You know, so they get taxes just as, you know, as we know, taxes get moved over as well as the ambulance fund gets moved over. So, you know, I just want to go, I actually have a few things to say here. I just want to go back to some of the things that Counselor Kenyon said, you know, and. First of all, I don't know how many times we said it in budget committee. I just want to point out that no one is pointing fingers at any department. No one is saying this is what is the problem in our budget. And saying it's one thing or another. We recognize that it is multiple things. Our city administrator recognizes that. All of the council recognizes that. The budget committee listened to it. We discussed so many of these things in the budget committee. And, you know, it was, it was an onerous thing. We talked about minutia as well as things that were really, really, really important. And I appreciated every one of them. However. The budget committee did pass this budget and did move it on to the council. And so now it is up to us as council to determine whether we want to take their recommendations. And we did recommend about the WAC. We also recommended. And I also recommended, as well as Counselor Kenyon did, that we not purchase a street sweeper. And that was taken out of the budget. And every, every, every question that we had, we got an answer to. We may not all have agreed on the answer, but in the end, we did pass this and we moved it on to council. A lot of the questions that I'm hearing coming up right now are questions that we should have been asking. And resolving during the budget committee, and I'm a little disappointed that, that we didn't evidently do that. There are still many questions out there. And that is. And that's a shame. I know the budget is difficult. And we have a lot of new budget members and they did their darndest to understand and, and move through the weeds. Because this isn't something that just comes easily. Civic budgets are very difficult. And it's a whole different set of rules that apply. So I just want to remind everybody that this isn't the first time we've looked at this. We have been looking at this for more than two months. And it is time to, to not only move forward. But as Dawn, as Counselor Kenyon is about to, to share, she has some suggestions now that she thinks are important to do. And she made suggestions before. I don't mean to say that she didn't. She did. And I think we all made suggestions and in the end, the budget committee forwarded the budget as it was. And with the suggestion changes, and here it is. So I'm going to go back to Melissa. Well, actually Eric, I'm gonna. Call on you because I think you may have some clarity in what Audi and Dawn said and that that's so, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to let Audi know he was asking about the. Money that the fire department receives. The fire department operates next year at a one point one million dollar budget. Of that one point one million dollars, five hundred and sixty five thousand of it is transferred from the general fund collected from tax revenue. The remainder is what we receive either from ambulance billing, our contract services. Or other fees that we send out, just for clarification.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Counselor Bjornson?
Yeah, I just, I am uncomfortable with passing a budget with a fee in it that we haven't discussed as a council since it's gone through budget committee. I do feel like we should have spent more time as a budget committee hashing through some of this. We tried, we tried, we tried. Everybody knows we tried. Didn't really get anywhere. We made a little bit of progress, but we didn't get anywhere. But my concern right now is. I understand what you're saying about needing to pass a budget so the city can operate on July first. But we have a little bit of time and what Brian is saying from Department of Revenue. I would really appreciate the opportunity to verify that information or get it in writing. Before we vote on the cart before the horse. I'm willing to meet. Next week. I don't know. I just am not comfortable voting on the budget with the fee in it until. I can verify that that is true, that. If we vote that fee down, it won't have teeth. Makes sense as it said. I want verification.
Thank you. Counselor Bjornson, are you done?
Yeah. Yes.
I have to interject right here. While I understand and I appreciate what you're saying, the implication that our city administrator would willingly lie to us or misrepresent something that was said from the state. Has to be unequivocally denied at this point. I find that to be insulting and I know Bjornson, counselor, you did not mean it to be insulting. But let's be careful about what we say to one another. Having reached out to the state to make sure that he is doing his job appropriately. It is inappropriate to suggest that you have to have it in writing in order to believe what he has to say. So forgive me for my, my fervor, but I fervently would say that that is very, very out of.
Thanks. For a second, if I may, I was not. Implying that the city administrator is untrustworthy or not to be. Trusted. I did not clarify my statement beforehand by saying. Excuse me for a second. By saying that in past budget seasons that I have participated in, we have been told one thing by certain people on the staff and in charge. So we passed a budget based on that word that never happened. And so here we were kicking the can down the road, as you like to say. Do not tell me that I don't have a right to verify. That was not an attack on Brian in any way. That actually had nothing to do with him. It had to do with prior administration and prior experience.
While I appreciate your rebuttal, I do not accept it. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Bjornson. I don't think it's a bad idea since we do have plenty of time to. I shouldn't say plenty of time. We have ten days or whatever until the end of the month. We have to have this resolved by then and frankly, whether it involves verifying the information or not. I, I want the time to. I, I want the time to, to mull that over and really decide, am I willing to, to make that decision? That is not something I can decide with the information I have thus far. So I'm, I agree with Counselor Bjornson.
I have to say I agree as well. I'm not comfortable passing, putting a budget through that has that fee in the line.
All right. Given it's nine-thirty and I have heard from three counselors that, that they don't want to continue in this direction and want to verify whether or not we have the cart before the horse or we're doing something that is going to cause us grief farther down the line. I'm going to poll the other counselors. It is nine-thirty-one. We agreed to move forward in thirty-minute increments. Given this last discussion, it sounds like what we need to do is close this meeting and set another special meeting in as soon as, as is feasible and possible. Given this is Thursday, Friday would give us an opportunity to verify statements. Let's, let's look at two meetings, the twenty-first and the twenty-fourth. Check your calendars, please. If there's anything glaring, say so now. If not, it'll give you a chance to take a look at it and Brian can put out a, a meeting. Brian, if we have a meeting on the twenty-first, does that give us enough time to post it?
Yes, the, the only caution I would give you is if you make significant changes to the budget that either increase expenditures in certain areas more than ten percent, it requires another public hearing and noticing. And so you might get your, paint yourself into a, a real hard box, real hardcore.
Very true. That's very true. So let's say that again. So if we make changes to this budget that increase it, not decrease it, but increase it by more than ten percent, it has to go back through public hearings. And public hearings have to be notified with how many days in advance?
Eric? We have to notify at the earliest five days before, before the meeting, the publication has to appear in the paper.
But we can still go ahead and do a meeting on the twenty-first. And then if we make adjustments that require another public hea- hearing itself, we will have time to do that, one, two, three, four, and have another meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I don't think we can have another budget meeting on the twenty-first because tomorrow if I put in the notice with a registered guard, it would be at least one day. So we're talking nineteenth plus five.
So we can have another meeting, a special meeting on the twenty-first as a council, but not a public hearing?
Right.
That we can deliberate on the twenty-first? Yep. Okay, so let's do that. Michelle, your hands up. Is that twenty-first, is that a horrible day?
No, sorry. I just forgot to take my hand down.
No problem. I'm just glad I noticed it. Okay, so let's, with the agreement here of council, Counselor Kenyon, I see your hand up, so I don't know if it was left up or you're. Okay, no problem. So if anybody is opposed and would like to continue on, we can continue, but I do think that we should go ahead and meet on the twenty-first to, to reopen this and start talking about it. By then, we should have a, a decision in writing that can be shared with the council about the process that we're doing so that we'll all feel comfortable with what is going forward. And then we'll go from there. Is that agreed with everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
It is.
Good. Okay, I want to, with council's permission, and close our meeting without any further public here, public comment, since we are already at nine-thirty-five. Do you agree?
Yes.
All right, so given that, Brian, I think you have your direction. Eric, council, we will see each other on the twenty-first at seven o'clock for another Zoom meeting. And this meeting of the Oak Ridge City Council on six-seventeen is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for participating. It was a rough time, but so far we're still not bleeding. So that's good. Bye.
Bye.